Hello everyone, great to see the increase of number of participants. We are starting four minutes late to allow people to join the Zoom. Thank you for taking the time to participate in this special session exploring UN agencies education response to COVID-19. You are joining us on day two of our first virtual conference, Education Disrupted, Education Reimagined, and welcome back to those who have joined us in previous sessions. I think I became a familiar voice now at the beginning of each session, so I apologize for repeating some of the information as we have new participants. My name is Asma Al-Fadala and I am the Director of Research at WISE. WISE is an initiative of Qatar Foundation and WISE is dedicated to thinking and building the future of education. Special thanks to our speakers and keynotes, we have 40 speakers in this two-day conference. The United Nations has described the global scale and pace of education disruption due to COVID-19 as unparalleled. Across the world, over a billion students are out of school with numbers increasing each day. Education officials at all level, in addition to parents and caregivers, are attempting to keep students engaged and learning at home through a variety of ways. However, with all the fear, panic and unknowns, new channels of innovation and creativity are also accelerating at unprecedented levels. School systems have been challenged to rethink traditional learning models and rapidly build tests and pilot new structures to accommodate a completely different reality. So we must ask ourselves what we can learn from this to improve our systems for the future. In partnership with Salzburg Global Seminar, WISE decided to organize this conference in five parts to accommodate participants in different zones. This is part four of our conference and we are delighted to have been contacted by several UN agencies, including UNESCO, honorwa, UNHCR and UNICEF to put on this special session together to explore their responses to the current crisis. We look forward to this unique opportunity to hear from the heads of education of these agencies. Over the past two days, we have looked at how participants, how practitioners, school leaders and policymakers around the world are addressing the current crisis and also how they are thinking about what the future of education looks like after COVID-19. This special session with the UN is a perfect bridge between the two days of our conference, both looking at crisis management and response to the current situation, as well as the notion of looking at how we can redesign and rethink how we structure and approach education in the future. One clear theme of this conference is the, is this notion of mass law before bloom. What are our basic and most important needs as human beings? Our speakers here from the UN are all in this business of crisis management and serving to support people in the most challenging situations, so we would be remiss if we didn't include their important point of view. So many children around the world are touched by the work of these agencies and the speakers we have in this panel. A few key themes for this discussion will include: number one, support for national programs, specific support for refugee populations, support for remote learning online and offline, inequality concerns, how do you try and ensure that pre-COVID-19 inequalities are not replicated in new approaches to education, and finally, post-COVID-19 thinking. I'm very happy now to introduce you to Dominic, Program Director at our partner organization, Salzburg Global Seminar, who will lead the session and the discussion, and thank you again.
Thank you, thank you Dr. Asma. I'm Dominic Register and I work on education programs at Salzburg Global Seminar and I'm also delighted to welcome you all to the second day and the fourth component of the Education Disrupted, Education Reimagined Conference. Salzburg Global Seminar is an independent not-for-profit organization founded in 1947 in the aftermath of World War II and based in Salzburg in Austria. Our core mission is to challenge current and future leaders to shape a better world, which feels particularly topical and timely in the context of the current crisis and more specifically for the discussions in this conference. I am also, along with Dr. Asma and several of the other speakers over the different sessions in the conference, part of a new initiative called Karanga, which is a global alliance for social emotional learning and life skills, and we have already heard a lot about social emotional learning during the previous parts of the conference. And the conference, as Dr. Asma said, has come together incredibly quickly in just three weeks and we've had a fantastic lineup of thinkers and education leaders. This part of the program with the special focus on UN work has come together in less than a week and we're incredibly grateful and appreciative of all of the speakers giving of their time and being willing to share their expertise with us. When we first started to plan the whole conference, we settled on three key objectives. We wanted to help understanding around what is happening in different educations, different education systems during the COVID-19 pandemic. We wanted to try and provide an opportunity for the exchange of ideas and practice across different education systems in terms of what is working for short to midterm education responses to the disruption that the pandemic is causing. And we also wanted to help stimulate global conversations about how education can be part of a build-back-better narrative and what might change within education systems when a new normal emerges post-COVID-19. And we had the idea of two connected themes over the two days of the conference, where yesterday focused more on the short to midterm responses and that is most of the discussions today are about longer-term thinking and this idea of how education can be part of a build-back-better framing. And what's really exciting thing about this UN session is the way in which it bridges both of those themes. The level of interest in the conference and the number of people who've registered for it has been fantastic with the live streaming over the previous components. It looks like we've had considerably more than 5,000 viewers or participants. And one of the amazing advantages of virtual or online convening is that we can go to scale in a way we couldn't if we were physically meeting and we're not time-bound in the way that we would be if we were all physically together for the next, for these two days. So we see this conference is very much the beginning of a whole series of different conversations that we very much hope will help shape, refine and improve how education systems respond to the disruption that the pandemic is causing and cope better during it. And we hope ultimately we can contribute to helping shape fairer education systems that are better designed around the reality of 21st century lives. Both Salzburg Global and WISE also see this as the first in a series of similarly themed online conferences and we're really keen to work with all the participants and to hear from you and work with you to help shape the focus and agenda for future conferences in the series. And so the comments and questions that you pose in the chat function on Zoom during this discussion, we'll be saving those and then using them to engage with you all afterwards over the next few weeks to try and get more ideas from you as around how we might frame future discussions. And so please do take full advantage of the chat function in Zoom. Share where you're joining us from, where you're physically distancing from. Please feel free to use it to share research or articles that are pertinent to discussions going on at the time or post questions and comments that we'll try and bring in in the discussion at the end. You can also download the chat when you leave the webinar at the end so that you have a record of all of the links and suggestions that people have shared. One of our mentors at all of the programs we run in Salzburg is to be tough on the issues but be kind on each other. So even if you disagree with comments that are being made in the chat function, we would ask you all to respect that approach. We also very much hope that the conversations can move beyond just those of us who are joining through Zoom. We've been using three hashtags so far over the conference, SGS Edu, WISE All In and Future Ed, so please feel free to share thoughts and reflections on Twitter or other social media platforms. We have an amazing lineup of speakers this afternoon. We're going to hear in a minute an opening address from Manos Antoninos, who's the Global Education Monitoring Report Director. We'll then hear from Robert Jenkins, who's the Chief of Education and Associate Director in the Program Division at UNICEF. Robert will be followed by his colleague Yvette Blanco, who's the UNICEF Country Representative for El Salvador. We will then hear from Caroline Pontefract and Frost Abbott. Caroline's the Director of Education at the UN Relief and Works Agency for Palestinian Refugees in the Near East and Frost is a Senior Education Program Specialist. And we will then hear from Becky Telford, who's the Chief of Education for UNHCR. So absolutely amazing opportunity to have four global leaders in education share their thoughts and reflections. After we've had all of the presentations, we'll then be able to open it up for a bit of discussion amongst those, which is where I'll try and bring in as many of the questions and comments that you're sharing in the chat function as possible. So it now gives me enormous pleasure to introduce Manos Antoninos, the Global Education Monitoring Report Director. For anyone who doesn't know, the Global Education Monitoring Report or GEM Report is an editorially independent, evidence-based annual report, which is published by UNESCO and its mandate is to monitor progress towards the education targets in the Sustainable Development Goals. So Manos, over to you please.
Thank you, Dominic. Thank you, Dr. Asma. I will be sharing with you my presentation, but first of all, I would like just to thank you very, very much for the kind invitation. Both WISE and the Salzburg Global Seminar have been great partners in issues that really matter for education. And as you rightly explained, the Global Education Monitoring Report, which exists since 2002, is a tool of the international community for monitoring progress on international education targets. We are an editorially independent team, as you mentioned, based at the UNESCO headquarters in Paris. And in accepting this invitation, I have to admit that I did accept it with some trepidation because I know how each one of us is fighting for both space and time and to some extent maybe we're among the lucky ones, those who have some space, let's say, to work from home, even though we might have to compete with others in the family or the demands on that space may be considerable. And we may also have space in our heads to work without distractions, even though we may be consumed with other concerns about our loved ones or those nearby or further away who are struggling right now. And we are also lucky to have probably sufficient time to dedicate to attending. It's really fantastic to see all corners of the world, really on the right-hand side of my screen, I see now from El Salvador to the Philippines. And it's, it's really terrific achievement that you have managed to set this all together. I even see someone who wrote earlier Amanda from West Wales, where I'm actually also myself currently located. But while we may be lucky and have time and space and time and space are a luxury, of course, we should always remember that we are really privileged compared to those whose lives are being devastated by illness, but more likely are about to see the carpets pulled under their feet with the approach of the financial crisis that is rapidly affecting lives already, but unfortunately likely to see many more lives to be in the coming weeks and months and years. So let me briefly share with you a few thoughts from my presentation, my presentation that I have put together on how the UN system is actually challenged in the coming, right now and in the coming days to respond to this unprecedented epidemic. I don't want to waste too much of your time, but I think it is quite amazing to witness how rapidly, in a very, very short period of time, we have seen the epidemic, not only of the virus itself, but also of its effects. And this wonderful video of UNESCO is actually showing the speed with which schools closed initially partially, but rapidly countrywide around the world. And as things stand now, more than 90% of students are away from school at all levels. And we're talking about more than 1.5 billion learners who are missing out on these opportunities. And if we were to summarize the crisis, I think there are two important points to remember. First of all is that the crisis has really exposed inequalities that perhaps until very recently, we were refusing to even count and confront. We have published today a very interesting personal story of a teacher in Marseille, in an underprivileged quarter of Marseille, where the, the teacher in this preschool is really facing enormous difficulties. And we're talking about a wealthy city in one of the world's richest countries, one of the G7 countries. But if you read the experiences and the challenges that this teacher is facing, you'll understand the type of inequality that were lurking in the background. But now with the absence of contact, physical contact between the teacher and the students, and the exposure to the realities of these students' home lives, how complicated these tasks have become. So the inequalities coming to sharper relief is the first big lesson. The second big lesson is all the ethical moral decisions. We've heard about the moral struggles of doctors, nurses and other personnel at the forefront of this crisis. But teachers also, education systems face moral dilemmas as they try solutions, which may well be good for many, most, but definitely not for all. And that's actually what we're really being confronted with right now. So I have tried to summarize the consequences that the education world is facing into these four categories. First of all, we have the interruption of learning. Let's say approximately, although data are often eluding us at this stage, half of the world is not even given the chance to an online education service. Our systems in many parts of the world were unprepared. So ministries of education have not really provided such opportunities. And the teachers that were supposed to put them to work were not appropriately prepared. But we also see that half the world, and we know that very well, do not even have the means to be online due to the digital divide, which cuts through individual societies, but primarily cuts across the globe, with some countries really struggling to even have access to electricity, let alone connectivity to the internet. Secondly, we see the disruption of social support from school meal services being interrupted to all sorts of support services that are being provided for vulnerable groups, especially the case of students with disabilities, is one of those that are coming starkly in this case. And of course, we have new challenges for students whose homes are not suitable, either because they have no space to work there or because of other conditions and for whom going to school was an important moment in the day. We have the financial impact on governments. As we know, the largest depression is on the door, calling for actions for that to be taken. And we have the financial impact on households, which are potentially grave. We have to say that the effect of the impact on the households on education can be a bit unpredictable. We have seen the experience in some of the richer countries, for example, during the great financial crisis of 10 years ago. But actually, some students ended up staying longer in education because they had no other options. But for other parts of the world, the crisis is going to have really devastating effects on education. So what is the role of the UN system and how does this role translate in education? If you visit the UN website, you'll see that the UN defines five core activities for itself. First of all, to establish international peace and security. And in the case of UNESCO, which is a UN organization that is responsible for education, we have to remember that its mandate is to bring solutions to peace through education. Secondly, we have the challenge of human rights protection, which is of course a universal concern of the United Nations. In this case, in the case of education, we have the unique opportunity to address issues of privacy and the use of technology that are coming at the forefront. Third, the UN is of course active as a provider of humanitarian aid. And we have the honor and the pleasure to have the contributions from UNICEF's team and of course from Rebecca, from Rebecca Delford, from UNHCR, on all the experience they bring to this crisis, including in education. The UN of course has the responsibility for delivering on the international agenda, Agenda 2030 for Sustainable Development. And it can contribute by building an evidence base of strong practices, monitoring and making recommendations to help build more resilient education systems for the future. There's a fifth responsibility of the UN on preserving and maintaining international law, but that probably is the one that is not immediately affected. Of course, there were some cases of piracy of medical supplies, but at least that doesn't apply in the case of education. But there are challenges as we speak for the UN system to deliver. I don't need to say too much, but you have been witnessing in the news the backlash that the World Health Organization is facing, which is not one of case, it's part of the wider unfavorable context to multilateralism. And with these doubts on its role, it's of course very, very difficult for international organizations to operate. Secondly, the world has changed. The world for which the UN system was established 75 years ago is not the same anymore. We have concentrated power of some of the large corporations that deliver digital services. And it is a very different set of governance institutions that we need for ensuring that the best protection is offered to those who might want to access education services online. UNESCO put together rapidly a coalition that brought onto the table for the first time some of the largest tech corporations in the world, but no principles are in place about this engagement. So this is a major challenge. The third challenge is that there is a generalized emergency. The UN can of course operate if there are emergencies in individual places and therefore they can be prioritized. Although in recent years, as we know, the number of emergencies has been growing and also lengthening in terms of their duration. There are very few cases we have generalized emergencies. Maybe Caroline Pontefract from ANURA can describe some of these generalized emergency situations that have been going on for a very long time. For example, in the Gaza Strip. But this type of situation is of course unprecedented and puts huge pressure on the UN's resources. A fourth constraint is that the changes are rapid and uneven. Governments would really like to seek the advice of the United Nations, but their contexts are very different in this current situation and not only in technology. Let's look at the role of examinations. Examinations play a very important role in many countries and they have also been disrupted through postponement, through cancellation, through moving in different modes. Every country responds in different ways because they have very different needs. UNESCO has been trying to put together some recommendations. They convened both ministerial meetings, ad hoc ministerial meetings, trying to summarize the experience that we are collecting from different parts of the world. But ultimately, every government has a different perception of the need for support. Examinations have different roles in their societies and not one solution can be of service to all of them equally. So there is a challenge. And finally, education, and we should remember that, is not health. WHO can offer recommendations based on best clinical practices and the knowledge that we have. Often in education, although there have been very, very valuable attempts to offer protocols and certain practices in responding. In this particular case, the challenge is unprecedented and it's difficult to follow particular steps for all countries. But I'm sure colleagues will say more about that later on. So what should the UN system do in education? I come up with four recommendations of four, four, four main roles that we need to be aware of. And the first is to say that the UN system should prioritize those at risk of exclusion. There is a big question mark in this crisis. And of course, in this conference, you have been talking a lot about online distance education modalities as being of course a crash test for the future, an incredible opportunity to see what technology can really do. How can it really transform the education services for across the globe? However, we should not forget that there are negative consequences on equality. Just to take the example of Senegal, which is not one of the poorest countries, is actually one of those countries that have been trying very hard with all partners to deliver online services. Less than one in five upper secondary school students can access online resources. So it's very important to apply also in this crisis, the do no harm principle, which we know from other parts of the UN system. In other words, that we should not deliver solutions that actually may leave some of those who are intended to be the beneficiaries, in fact, further behind. So more attention needs to be based on low tech solutions. These are emerging and actually, as you see from this slide, from a very large range of countries, not only poorer countries, but even richer countries that have been deploying radio and television solutions. We have been rediscovering the need for that if we really want to make sure that we don't leave some of the students in the population behind. And France struck an agreement with its postal service to deliver printed materials to households without internet. But that requires a lot of information, a lot of news, a lot of knowledge about the situation of different households. But the UN should prioritize and emphasize and draw attention, not only to the high tech end of solutions, but also the low tech, if everyone is going to benefit. More attention is needed on teachers. Teachers not only because they have been unprepared in many cases, but also because they're struggling. They're struggling delivering the everyday work. They were never prepared for that. Some are even intrinsically opposed to the idea of distance learning because they feel it's not the right way because some of the students will not benefit. And we should not forget the poor and disadvantaged students altogether. 85 million students in Latin America and the Caribbean rely on school meals. These, in many countries, these services have been disrupted. And in many countries, I mentioned the examples here of Australia and China, but there are many more, have seen services to learners with disabilities disrupted or even suspended. The second and major challenge for the UN system in education is the need to deliver global public goods with a human rights protection perspective. Using private digital services for education should not necessarily mean, should not by any means mean, accepting the terms and conditions. So the world needs and the UN are really, the United Nations system is very well placed to offer the protection, an arrangement for protecting privacy, data, human rights, rights of the child, given that minors are supposed to be accessing these education services online, and guarantee equity and non-discrimination. It is very important to agree principles such as no identification of users and no advertisement when they use the services of these providers and on data to document, to have privacy on documents and on conversations and to have the right to access or delete materials that have been posted online. But this is a very long term issue. It is not going to be resolved overnight. Multiple actors are involved and the politics are very, very complicated. But that makes the UN a great forum for these discussions to take place, starting from this moment where the crisis has come to the fore. The third role for the UN system is that we need to refocus attention to what matters in education when schools actually reopen. So I think you have been discussing a lot about these issues in the last couple of days. And the UN system does have processes in place to draw countries' attention to what matters most and to mobilize them. UNESCO has, as you probably know, a commission for the futures of education currently in place. They issued, in fact, a statement the other day, drawing on their latest deliberations. And some of the issues that emerged from there are really critical. We need to put values at the heart of teaching and learning to ensure, because of course, in recent days, we have seen outbursts of a lot of problems, stigmatizing certain communities or spreading false news or accusing nations from each other. Education systems need to focus on building values such as solidarity, empathy, equity, trust and appreciation of our common humanity. Appreciation of science too is another issue that has emerged in recent days. We need to rethink the tools that students need in order to access technology, to prepare them and to protect their own privacy, but also others' privacy, the right to free expression, the ability to process information and protect their rights. We need to appreciate through education the importance of human interaction. That's a value that perhaps has been sidelined in recent years as technology influence is growing. And we need to appreciate, and I think this crisis is a perfect opportunity for that, appreciate that the importance of learning outside school, all these other opportunities that we have and which we need to complement with what's happening in school to make the most of these synergies. Finally, the UN system, and I mean that in the broader, broader possible definition, needs to rally to protect education services and in doing that to act as one. A global recession means lower public revenue and lower public expenditure, including aid. And of course, the size of this crisis is going to be even larger than that of the financial crisis that hit us in 2008. This graph shows that what matters and what will be the major effect from the crisis is the effect on the level of education. Because the financial, the last financial crisis had low impact or no impact on the share of education in gross domestic product or in the share of education in the total public expenditure. But as you saw, there was a dent on the level of expenditure that carries, has effects even to this day. Some joint action is emerging and I've been witnessing in recent days how UNESCO, UNICEF and the World Bank have been acting together to put together a joint proposal for the Global Partnership for Education in terms of global and regional responses to help coordinate actions that will benefit countries. And that's precisely the role that the UN should be playing. I conclude by drawing attention a little bit to our work. The Global Education Monitoring Report maintains a blog, the World Education Blog, you see the address here. And since the crisis started, we have been leading a series of topics. Some are focusing on issues like those that I covered in my presentation on teachers, on financing, the principle of doing no harm, the role of business, how students with disability have suffered, data and how we collect data and how we will be able to monitor the effect of this crisis on education systems, issues of equity and issues of assessment and how we are reconsidering the purpose and the means for assessing students' learning. We have also had the series of descriptions of country responses, both globally and for individual countries looking in depth for some of those. Last but not least, the Global Education Monitoring Report will be reflecting the effects of the crisis. First of all, on its forthcoming reports on inclusion, which will be launched now delayed. It was meant to be launched earlier this month. And now the scheduled launch is on the 23rd of June. And we will be covering the first impact, let's say, what we have understood, what we have learned on the effect on inclusion and the effect of COVID on inclusion. But we will also be covering COVID effects in the two next editions. The 2021 report on the role of non-state actors, which is of course particularly prevalent in this crisis. And last but not least, our 2022 report, which I would like to draw your attention to, on the role of technology in education. We now have the perfect case, a perfect experiment, perfect knowledge basis to learn much more about technology in education. And with that, I would like to thank you very much. And I'm happy to answer any questions or participate in the discussion that will follow. Thank you very much.
Manos, thank you very much indeed. That was fantastic opening presentation. The three themes of the next Global Education Monitoring Reports are unbelievably pertinent. I think we've had so many discussions over the previous parts of this conference about inclusion, about the ever increasing role of non-state actors in education and their importance during the current crisis and obviously the role of technology. So I'm certain in the discussion that follows, we're going to come back to those themes. And thank you again for your presentation and contribution so far. It now gives me great pleasure to introduce Robert Jenkins, who is the Chief of Education and Associate Director in the Program Division at UNICEF. Rob's going to speak for about 15 minutes and his colleague Yvette Blanco, who is the UNICEF Country Representative for El Salvador, will then take over. For anyone who isn't familiar with the breadth of UNICEF's mandate, then UNICEF works in 190 countries and territories to save children's lives, to defend their rights and to help them fulfill their potential from early childhood through to adolescence. So Rob, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dominique. Thank you to Wise also for this kind invitation. And I very much look forward to hearing from colleagues and question and answer. I'm going to zero in on the national response. As you mentioned, UNICEF, the United Nations Children's Fund, is, we're leading the response at country level in education and leaders of education emergencies. So I'm going to zero right in on the national response and what's taking place in all countries that you've mentioned, the 190 countries in which we're involved in. Key to this national response is the slide I'm presenting here, which is what we're calling the decision tree. Obviously, as schools closed, as Manos mentioned, there was an enormous amount of effort by education partners, often led by UNICEF at country level, to find alternative ways for children to learn. And this decision tree was critical because the starting point is And this decision tree was critical because the starting point is how do children, what, how can children access continuous and remote learning? And that involves, of course, as you would all recognize, there are IT-enabled solutions, technologies-enabled solutions, but also less tech and low-tech-enabled solutions, ranging from radio, TV to paper pens, delivery to households. And this decision tree is a tool that's being used by ourselves and many other education partners at country level to enable that discussion to happen, to find a way using multiple tools in each country to reach all children. If you go to the next slide, it'll also show the data on the left. You'll see how, for example, the availability of technology for children in different countries is the key determinant of the tools that one can use at country level to enable children to learn. The next slide. Also, this shows recognizing, of course, as has been much mentioned, the importance of reaching the most vulnerable children, poverty being a key indicator of access to technology and other means of learning. You'll see the huge range of, when you take the poorest quintile of children, the huge range of access to technology at home. And therefore, again, UNICEF has been advocating very, and the UN system more generally, at country level to use appropriate technology, starting with a focus on the most vulnerable children. Next slide. This shows television and the access of television across countries. You have very, very high access in many countries, some of which are also low-income countries. And indeed, you'll see in later slides on how television, radio has been a critical part of the response. I'm going to keep moving quickly just to respect the time. Next slide, please. Let me just move into some of the data of the national response. Next slide, please. So we have been measuring the, how countries have been initiating safe school operations. And there's a whole wide range of how to ensure schools remain safe during this pandemic and while schools had remained open, but now are also considering reopening. The continuity of education, as I've mentioned, using various tools, whether there's been additional efforts to reach, and Manos mentioned this, children's health and wellbeing, has increased risk to health and wellbeing as a result of school closures. And how many countries and which countries and how are they now considering reopening of schools? And the percentages here gives you a sense of, of indeed, the high percentage of countries, these are low and middle income countries, the program countries in which UNICEF works in. The high percentage of those that are, for example, measuring, have initiated continuity of education initiatives, 94%. But let me dive into this a little more before I pass to my colleague in El Salvador. Next slide, please. So you'll see a range of indicators across the bottom that relates to the safety for ongoing, ongoing school operation. The yellow bar is for national nationwide responses. And the blue is the percentage of countries in which UNICEF is engaged in. It's an internal, that blue bar we are using to support our country office work and share lessons between UNICEF's country offices. And the point of this slide is just give you a sense of the different interventions that countries are using to ensure school safety, when it was before closure and now also in the context of reopening. And we're monitoring this very carefully and supporting and sharing lessons between countries. Next slide, please. Now this, Manos touched on very briefly, but if you get a sense, this, if you look at the yellow bars, it gives you a sense of which technology and which approaches are most popular across countries. And it links back to the decision tree, which is the guidance and the interaction we're doing at country level is indeed, starting from analysis of how do, what, which children and what percentage of children access which social media, which technology, which, what, how widespread it is in order to find the correct tool to reach the most vulnerable. And indeed, you'll get a sense there across what are the most popular tools. As you would expect, the radio and television are very prominent and at scale. We do have 72% of low and middle income countries are employing some form of online platform, often with the support of UNICEF and the UN system more broadly. Next slide, please. Now for child health and wellbeing, here are also some slides, some indicators. I want to highlight child protection, what we mean by that. One of the key lessons from the Ebola crisis, where countries had closed schools for six months, some nine months in West Africa, the impact on child protection vulnerability, the increase in, for example, early pregnancies, increase in violence, sexual violence, other forms of violence against children, was significant. So in addition to the health and nutrition support that is being compromised as a result of school closures, indeed, we're emphasizing very strongly child protection measures. Next slide, please. So as I'm sure everyone is following very closely, as we're shifting to reopening, we're calling reopening better schools, meaning let's seize this opportunity to bring in some of the innovations that have been used for continuous learning, but also take the opportunity in reopening of schools to look at even how pedagogy is being, if there's innovations that can be used to improve pedagogy, if there's innovations that can be used to provide more holistic support to children and also reach the most vulnerable children and bridging them back into school. So there's a whole range of initiatives. I'm expecting, and we're all expecting this, these percentages to go up very quickly now over the coming days and weeks. And key to this will also be for us to be facilitating discussions between countries so that we can learn from best practices. I think at this point, if it's okay, Dominique, I will, Dominique, I will pass over to Yvette, my colleague, the UNICEF representative in El Salvador. And then I'll just come back for a final minute to wrap up with some key lessons learned. So if you don't mind, Dominique, I'll pass to Yvette.
Great. Thanks, Rob. That was fascinating.
Hi, thank you so much and thank you for the opportunity to be here with you. It's actually very exciting. I wanted to hone in on a little bit of the experience of the region and El Salvador in particular. In the context of the Ministries of Education of Latin America and the Caribbean, the schools closed progressively. Currently, schools are closed in 22 countries and 12 in the current state and region. We're falling in an affectation of 159 million children being left out of school. That's 95% of learners in the region. In response to COVID-19, in the Mesoamerica subregion, which is comprised of Belize, Colombia, Costa Rica, Dominican Republic, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, Panama, El Salvador, and Nicaragua, nine out of 10 countries have closed schools at the preschool, primary, and secondary level. The exception is just Nicaragua. The result is that there's an estimated 54.4 million children and adolescents that are currently out of school. The closure of educational institutions as a measure to stop the rapid spread of COVID has had an impact on all educational systems in the subregion and has led to the emergence of multiple educational responses by governments. I'm pleased to say that in the case of El Salvador, the way that it was addressed was through the decision tree that Rob Jenkins has presented. These are being implemented in highly challenging contexts in the subregion, especially considering that almost half of adolescents drop out of secondary school and two-thirds are at risk, adolescents in Mesoamerica will not finish school. This is before the crisis. In the case of El Salvador, for example, out of every 100 children who entered primary education, only 37 graduated secondary school. So as you can see, the crisis in education prior to COVID in this region was extremely, extremely great. And of course, the concern of all of us is how to reinvent, reinvigorate the educational system so that we can arrest this crisis in the context of imagining new opportunities. A particular challenge is to reach the most vulnerable. Children living in poverty in rural and remote areas, migrant, refugee, and returnee children, children from ethno-linguistic minorities, and of course, children with disabilities. So moving very quickly through this, we've mentioned a lot of the challenges. Strengthening technological skills, teacher training to integrate technologies in the learning process, significant increase in the provision of technological services for students and teachers, management of unlimited access to virtual platforms, and how to bridge this digital divide that we've all been speaking of. Interestingly enough, in the case of El Salvador, there was already a plan to bridge the digital divide. To give you a sense, currently, 52% of schools have no internet access currently. While the Ministry of Education had a plan in place to bridge the digital divide over the coming years, this plan has been expedited and will now be implemented in months instead of years. And in this context, one very interesting experience that I just wanted to highlight is currently a project that UNICEF is embarking upon with the Inter-American Development Bank, which is called Educación Mesomérica. The Educación Mesomérica initiative is an initiative aimed at its core to reduce educational exclusion and increase the number of vulnerable young people who actually graduate with life and critical job skills. This is highly relevant in the face of the pandemic that has forced school closures and that are likely to exacerbate educational exclusion in a region that's among the most divided in terms of income equality. The initiative aims to achieve this through the implementation of a package of country-adapted interventions, including many of those that have been discussed here today, online teaching through digital learning platforms, flexible learning modalities, and prevention of violence in learning environments. What sets the initiative apart, however, is how it achieves it. It has essentially five key elements. A results-based financing model that leverages donor funding to promote more effective and equitable allocation between government and education resources. Country operations will be financed through a mix of donor funding, about 40%, and domestic government resources, 60%. And as governments achieve agreed-upon country-level targets, countries will recover 50% of their upfront investment. Cost-effective interventions is another component. Educación Mesomérica will offer countries a menu of cost-effective interventions to achieve agreed-upon results. Technical support, as it will provide customized technical support to tackle bottlenecks faced in each of the countries. It will have target verification. Continuous learning is also another component. And moving very quickly, this approach of combining sort of regional experiences has already, prior to the COVID crisis, garnered quite a lot of momentum. So one of the interesting things that's going on in El Salvador, this plan that I mentioned, Bridge Digital Divide, was in place. And in this initiative, actually really has contributed to that. So I just honed in on that, but I'm going to turn over again to my colleague, Rob. Thank you so much for the opportunity and happy to answer any questions.
Actually, Yvette, the thank you comes back to you and all the frontline country-based colleagues, to which we have 135 representatives like Yvette across the world. These are on day-to-day basis figuring out exactly the issues that we discussed. So enormous amount of respect. Thank you for taking time and contributing to this. Final, final slide in one minute, if you don't mind, Dominique, from my side. It just shows the, some key lessons, if it pops up there. And it's on, yeah, right there. Let me just lesson stroke challenges. Those are six. I'm not going to take any more time. I want to make sure my colleagues from other agencies also get their fair share. But the, just to skim your eyes across, these are some of our key challenges/lessons that we're working on right now. Some of these are being discussed in the chat, which we really appreciate. Again, thanks to Yvette for participating in this. And thanks, Dominique, on behalf of UNICEF for this opportunity. Much appreciated.
Well, thank you both, Rob and Yvette, very much. Rob, I know you have to leave fairly soon, but Rob's colleague Peter is going to take his place when we get to the panel discussion or the Q and A later. That was, that was an amazingly incredibly rich presentation with lots for us all to reflect on. We're going to move now to colleagues from UNRWA. Caroline Pontefract, who's the Director of Education, and Frost Abbott, who's the Senior Education Program Specialist. Among many other things, UNRWA is directly responsible for the education of more than half a million Palestinian students. And Frost and Caroline were both with us in Salzburg in December for an education program we had on here, which already feels like it belongs to a different lifetime than the one we're currently in. Caroline and Frost, over to you.
Hi, hello. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for including us on this. I'm hoping that the slides will come up somehow. Hello to everybody. I can't see any slides yet, Dominique. Okay, so we're going to talk about, I can't read them. Okay, fine. I'll put my glasses on a little bit to remind me. Okay, thank you. First slide, please. Okay, so you referred earlier, I think Manos referred to us as well, that UNRWA was born of crisis and is continuing to have to exist in crisis. And we don't just, you know, we are the UN agency that is looking at all those areas that Manos highlighted. We do provide aid. At the moment, we are trying to get food, we're trying to get cash to our people. There's all sorts of challenges. We're even trying to set up quarantine centers in our TIBIT, TIBIT institutions. So we drew with regard to international law, all the areas that Manos talked about, what we're all about. We provide relief and social services, provide health. So you can imagine our health centers at the moment are part of the kind of triage in terms of coronavirus and particularly in Gaza, where the health center is really weak and Syria too. So we're working on all fronts, of which education is an important part. And it's very great to see, at least in this crisis, that it's recognized as such. Because when we began the Syria crisis in 2011, when it began, I mean, we, in education, we had a challenge really in terms of making sure that the space was there for education. And I think that it came from the Palestine refugees, the actual commitment to education and their request, therefore, that it continue. But this time with regard to the COVID-19, very interesting to see that every single field, we have five fields of operation, Gaza, West Bank, Syria, Lebanon, and Jordan. As you said, 530-odd thousand students, school-aged students, 8,000 in our vocational training colleges, another ballgame. So it's very interesting to see that all our five fields did actually, you know, immediately begin to address education and emergencies because we were halfway through the second semester, or not even quite halfway through, and all our schools had closed and all the children were at home by the 15th of March. Can I have the next slide, please, Frost? And also to respond, something else that I was going to pick up on. You know, we've had 14 years now of blockade in Gaza, 14 years. And there was a kind of joke in Gaza at the beginning, but it wore thin, of course, about now you know, now the rest of you know what it's like. And it's true, you know, those of us who are living under the curfew and we lock down at night. It's like, now, now you know, because we've been under blockade for 14 years. And in West Bank, we had the occupation now for 53 years. So this is a situation we operate within, you know, totally responsible for the education of the Palestine refugees, even though within a host country, we do follow the host country curriculum, we do follow the study plans, we work alongside, but we're not, you know, the national system. So with regard to having national TV programs, et cetera, that kind of limits us a little bit in terms of what we can do. Of course, we can offer our own channels, et cetera. But you know, we have that slightly, they are our host countries because they are completely our hosts. So just to say that we had an education emergency response, which was for the crisis that started in 2011, really articulating what that approach was. And with the support of various donors over the years, we really strengthened that approach. And it was building around system. So we always say we had a system in place and the education emergencies was to try to ensure that that system could carry on. You know, we could carry on delivering quality education to all children. And we could build on that system, even if we had to do some things differently, do more of some things and do some completely new things. So within that education and emergency approach, we had four key areas. And that was obviously the self-learning, which we're going to talk about. Of course, all of these in detail. The psychosocial support, safety and security, and monitoring evaluation. Now, within this crisis at the moment, we also do TIBIT, which is Technical Vocational Education and Training. So we're addressing that too. But you can imagine, we had to rethink all of those areas in terms of how we deliver, because Frost will talk about this in more detail. But you can imagine that with regard to self-learning, we emphasize safe learning spaces, children coming together, meeting with the teacher. Sometimes they went into school, sometimes they were out in Syria. With regard to the psychosocial support, a lot of counseling, a lot of recreational activities. Safety and security was very much about, you know, how not to be, you know, kind of how to avoid mines, how to evacuate schools, et cetera. And obviously, the monitoring evaluation was, we developed a whole bank of indicators with regard to measuring, you know, what we were doing and what the system was doing at this time. So we had a very strong program, education emergency program, and it was still going on. And we just got some funding from government of Belgium recently. And we just got some funding from government of Belgium recently to continue that. And we will continue to build on it, because the Syria crisis continues and the refugees from Syria continue to live in Lebanon, in Jordan, et cetera. So we had to really rethink completely this approach. We very much agreed from early on that these are the same key areas. Now, what they mean in the COVID-19 context is different, but these are the key areas. And let's really think what they mean now and how we can actually, how we can address them. What are the new challenges with regard to this? I just look at my slide, it's very far away. I think, yes, I think I've covered everything there. So I think very much, as I said, really reconceptualizing. And one key thing I would say generally is communication. We've really strengthened our communication. We have five fields of operation. We have chiefs of education, who are Palestinian refugees, that's the top of the tree in terms of the education program. We have meetings every week with them, compare and contrast, et cetera. We also have meetings with each field individually, with the education team. We have a task force at HQ with all those areas that I just mentioned. People responsible, teams behind them, responsible for each of those areas, so that we can engage and support the fields and also produce. So we've set up a lot of different communication structures. And actually, when we talk about lessons learned and going forward, that's one that we will really take forward in terms of that communication, that additional communication. But now before, I won't say anything more, I'll come back later, because Frost is going to talk through the actual, each of those key areas and what they meant in the COVID-19, what they continue to mean in the COVID-19 context. Thank you, Frost.
Thank you, Caroline, and thank you, everyone, for having us and giving us this opportunity to share the UNRWA experience. Building on what Caroline noted, I'm going to go more into details on the thematic areas for the COVID education response, starting with what maybe UNRWA is famous for, the self-learning material, all the continuity of learning. As Caroline already hinted, during the several years of crisis, and particularly the Gaza wars and the Syria crisis, UNRWA developed a self-learning program, which was developed in print through an interactive learning website of educational games as well as educational TV lessons. But today, with the COVID crisis coming, we are faced with additional challenges, because that program was, in regular times or in conflict times, was delivered in alternative safe learning spaces that the communities managed to find. But with the COVID crisis, with the restrictions on social gatherings, with the restrictions on social distancing, we had to think of alternative ways in delivering this self-learning program, also taking into account what Manos also highlighted as a challenge that we face is the equity challenge. Because in many of the field offices in which we operate, especially like Gaza, there is a serious problem of electricity. I mean, when we put these programs on technological tools, how accessible are they for the majority of the population? When we also have large families with limited number of devices, with limited internet connectivity and speed. So this is posing challenges, and we're trying, as Caroline said, to work through this. And we have established a task force, and we're looking at different ways in which we can bypass these challenges. For example, we are highlighting very much the fact that the students have their own textbooks with them. And so whatever material we develop wraps around these textbooks and supports children, with the support of parents, to go through their textbooks. Because when the crisis happened, children were around, 75% of the school year was completed. So it's now dealing with the last 25 to 30% of the textbooks in order to complete this school year. We have used, whenever possible, WhatsApp groups in order to have teachers follow up with the students. And we are very much, and this is something that Caroline would speak about later, is the issue of evidence and trying to measure who among the children are not accessing any sort of support, which we will probably prioritize for future responses. The second area where we focused on is the psychosocial support. And this is something that we had highlighted in crisis-conflict situations, with increasing the capacity of counselors, whether to adding new counselors or strengthening their own capacity to deliver psychosocial support. We emphasized recreational activities and referrals through external partners. Again, with the COVID challenges, the whole concept of being together or doing recreational activities is not valid anymore. So we had to think about PSS through online platforms. We had to activate the role of counselors to provide psychosocial support in different ways. And we are now working very much on integrating psychosocial messaging within the self-learning material program that we are developing. And we have set up an agency-wide psychosocial support group of counselors that are meeting regularly and exchanging experiences across the field offices. The third area that we basically emphasized, what we used to call in our regular education and emergency response, safety and security. And here, we had to adapt it a bit to think about health safety. Because originally, when we were talking about safety and security interventions, it's about security risk assessments, it's about evacuation drills. We were talking about attacks against our schools, attacks against education personnel. But now we are shifting our thinking to also include the health risks. And we are witnessing, as Caroline also mentioned, that many of our schools are being used as quarantine centers or as an extension of our health clinics as part of our UNRWA health program. So what are we doing? Trying to emphasize further the awareness raising on prevention of the COVID-19 virus. And we are emphasizing whenever we get to purchase extra hygiene and sanitation kits and have these prepositions in case of school reopening. The last area that I will speak about is Technical Vocational Education. As noted earlier, we do have eight vocational training centers across the different field offices with around 8,000 Palestine youth that are attending these TIVIT centers. Of course, with the COVID-19, all the centers are closed. And so we are emphasizing a TIVIT education and emergency response as part of the COVID-19 response, where we are emphasizing that some of the learning could happen online, like for example, the theoretical part, whereas we are phasing to say like the more practical part of learning will happen once the TIVIT institutions are open and students could go back to the TIVIT centers. I will stop here and hand back to Caroline on the monitoring and evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just trying to work out the technology here, sorry. I couldn't read that slide, it's too tiny. And of course, we can't print things anymore. So, let me just find it, sorry. Okay, thank you. No, I'm just going to come back to the self-learning and with regard to what we can do. Before, we used to try to address the inequity by having printed material as well as with the TV programs. But even printed material now is a whole new challenge, because we do do food distribution sometimes, but it's like, we don't want social gatherings, we don't want transmit through the printed material. So this was a whole new ballgame to think about this. And to really think about, in terms of the type of material as well, to really make sure. As Frost said, we do have textbooks, so to really try to encourage the use of textbooks, not to develop material when we have something, but to develop wraparound support. And it's been really thinking about the content, but also the accessibility. With regard to the content, the team at headquarters reviewed the material, whether it's a host country. Host countries did a lot this time too, which is also interesting. Because before, it was very much UNRWA, say, but we see that the host countries in Palestine, here in Jordan, are actually putting things online, television programs. I think it's my, like in Manos's presentation in Jordan. So they're doing a lot too, but our role at headquarters is to support the fields by reviewing them. Now, we don't review them in terms of exactly the conceptual details of every page, but we do look at things like the nature of approach, so that we know whether it's online or this and that. We also look at the accessibility, and with regard to this, this comes back to the monitoring and evaluation. We're trying to do studies within the field with regard to what is the outreach, who has got mobile phones, et cetera. What about the internet connectivity? Electricity goes on and off in Lebanon all the time, to mention Gaza. So really should try to think, what is the accessibility and what do we know about the accessibility? So in terms of these studies, but then in terms of drilling down as well, and trying to do through, and also, obviously, you can't use technology. People have got technology, because those who haven't got it, of course. So really trying to find out ways of seeing what the reality is in households, because even if they have a laptop and electricity, as Frost said earlier, there could be many children. So we have to think about study plans. We can't have lots of children trying to learn at the same time, even presuming they do have an online connection. We have to think about trying to take into account that there will be different children of different ages in a family, and families can be very large, particularly in Gaza. So really trying to find out ways of checking that. We have the phone numbers in our educational management system of parents, and trying to literally phone the parents to see what is possible, what is feasible. And then really about the support, so the third area we look at with regard to the materials, the self-learning materials, is the teacher support. And this was highlighted in the UNICEF presentation. What is the role of the teacher here? Because we know that distance learning, I mean, it's like correspondence courses. Nobody really learns truly by distance. It's all about the support model around it. And particularly for children, even as adult learners, those of us who've done distance courses, you have a lot of support. So really working out how the teachers can support. And we've found that through WhatsApp, they can support in that way. So trying to see, how do they support? How can we get assessment into this learning material as well? What's possible? This is a key area, having answer keys, having self-reflection of the children, having the actual overall summative assessment. So and then the other area is the last area for us as a UN agency is neutrality, because we obviously are very fearful if things go up. One line that may be deemed by someone, and believe me, there will be someone out there who will deem it not neutral, because perhaps it shows a Palestinian situation. And as an UNRWA agency, we are criticized, et cetera, for those things. So we try to look at the materials with regard to those five aspects. And really trying now to drill down. So monitoring and evaluation has become more important. What we saw was our fears went forward, and that was great. We didn't want to stop them, they went forward. They had a lot of knowledge and experience with the EIE approach. They went forward and they were getting the materials out there, and they were thinking of psychosocial support. And then now it was a time to kind of think, okay, where are we? Who is actually using these materials? How can we find out? And one of our chiefs of education was saying yesterday, the difference between engagement, with participation, he said, between engagement and participation. What he meant was in terms of saying, yes, the child engaged, because they went, once they answered something. But really, real full engagement, how can we measure this? Really trying to drill down to seeing what the teachers are doing as well, and how they're engaged, and finding different tools. And also about platforms, trying to find what platform could support all the materials, because different fields are doing different things in our five fields of operation. So a huge emphasis now on the monitoring and evaluation in terms of harmonizing what the fields are doing. So we've got the questionnaires, we have simple questions, we make sure they can reach the students, the teachers, the parents. So this is really an important part as we move forward. And another important part is about documenting this. Because when we started, when the serious crisis started in 2011, I remember saying, well, what do we do? People said, oh, yes, during the Intifada, we did this and this and this. Oh, during the civil war, we did this and this. And it's like, oh, yes, please, show me. Show me the version of the concept, the material, and it wasn't there. I mean, maybe it was somewhere, but not accessible to me. So really making sure that we document at the moment, and this is really important for all of us. We document the response, we document as lessons are learned and the changes are made, what the monitoring and evaluation shows us, and we really document this. So we're doing that in terms of our meetings and capturing the minutes, really detailed minutes, in terms of what fields have said, what they've found out. And we're going to think about how to document it, both in that format, but then turn it into something very, very useful and tangible for the next time, which obviously might be sooner rather than later that we face such a crisis. And I just look at the next slide, make sure I haven't missed anything. Sorry, it's very difficult, it's very small. If I'm peering down your screens, I'm very sorry. With regard to the indicators, as I said earlier, we had a bank of indicators that we had spent a long time developing. We worked with our colleagues. We worked with UNICEF, we worked with NRC, we worked with UNESCO, we worked with many other colleagues in developing a bank of indicators to measure education emergencies. So we've had to revisit those with regard to what's present of the COVID-19 and which ones we can use now as well, because we were really looking at indicators for crisis. So we've really, as I said, we're moving on on that as well. Last slide. Okay, so some reflections to go forward, so not take up any more time. We will always say, building on what is there, the communication I mentioned earlier. And it's very difficult to see how we can maintain the level of communication, because it's really excellent, but it's also incredibly time-consuming. So we really have to think, as we go forward, and if we go back to schools, how we can keep that communication there, and how it can also build better. As we said, one thing we were talking about, the type of materials that we're writing, is the type of practice we've been trying to get in our schools with some degree of success. So the interaction, trying to open, encouraging comments of the children, open questions, formative assessment, the ongoing support, the involvement of the parents. This is something we've been trying to do in the classroom environment through the education reform. So we hope very much that now we can really, the teachers themselves will think, oh, hey, that worked quite well, didn't it, when I asked that question or when I got them to do this? And when I was talking to my colleagues about this, and the fact that I engaged with the parents, that was really helpful. So we hope that in a way that they will now, having done it, will begin to think, well, perhaps I can use some of those approaches in my class as well. Advocate for education and emergencies, as I said, this time, I think Manos or UNICEF colleague talked about lack of funding and what will happen in the future. Well, I mean, UNRWA always faces lack of funding, so I don't think there'll be that. But I think for us in UNRWA, it was very interesting to see how the education part of this emergency, even though it was such a health, it is such a health emergency, was really recognized. So that was really interesting for us to see that. And that's why we must capture what happened and capture the tools that were developed and be ready for the next one, because I think really to tell that story as well. And as I said, the ongoing monitoring and evaluation, absolutely important. I think what we've learned is that we thought we had a response. We were doing very well with it over the last 10 years. It was quite well-known, our response, the self-learning materials. So we thought we had this response and we would further strengthen it. And then suddenly, it's like, wow, we had to completely think of that response in this totally different context. And of course, all of us, I mean, this is all our children, we've never ever had that before. It's Gaza war, it's the Syria war, it's refugees that have had to move from Syria to Lebanon. But all the children at home, all the staff at home in our five fields, all in their own home. Nobody is in the office whatsoever. So this whole kind of different way of thinking about it. So it's been challenging. I mean, obviously, it's fascinating, and we hope that we will learn something from it, and it will improve our everyday practice if, when we get back into schools. Thank you very much, Dominic.
Caroline and Frost, thank you both very much. Frost, if you'd be kind enough to stop screen sharing, and then we can bring up Becky's presentation. Great, thank you. Yeah, another incredibly rich presentation. You could see in the comments, there are certain key themes beginning to emerge that we'll come back to after Becky's presentation. So I'm now really happy to introduce Becky Telford, who is Chief of Education Section for UNHCR, based at their headquarters in Denmark. UNHCR's mandate, for anyone who isn't familiar with it, is to protect refugees, forcibly displaced communities and stateless people, and to assist in their voluntary repatriation, local integration, or resettlement to a third country. And UNHCR considers it a particular priority to ensure that refugees have access to educational opportunities at all levels, including higher education. So Becky, over to you.
That's great. Thank you so much. And it's a real pleasure to come after the presentation from UNICEF and UNRWA, and from Manos, of course. You go to the next slide. So Dominic has set out who UNHCR is, and I think it's interesting to talk through some of the different populations that we're trying to serve. And to remember that within UNHCR's mandate, of the 20-plus million refugees who come under our care, around 8 million are of school age, that's a huge number of children, many of whom are already missing out on education. About 50% of those children aren't in school. And now with the COVID pandemic, everyone's out of school. And there's a real moment to look at whether we can make changes and support the education system for those children more effectively. Next slide. So Rob talked through national responses, and I think one of the things that we've been focusing on is how important it is that we don't lose sight of the global commitments that have been made and of the global approaches that we have been able to... how important it is that we don't lose sight of the global commitments that have been made and of the global approaches that we, we have been able to make some gains in and build on. And for UNHCR and education, there are three main points on this. The first is that we really recognise the need to plan nationally. It doesn't make sense for UNHCR to come charging in when actually host governments are putting in, putting in place programmes and ideas and putting those out to host communities and really managing those effectively within curriculum, even though that can be very hard. UNHCR's advocacy point for a long time has been around policy work towards the inclusion of refugees in international systems. And that means using the national curriculum, being able to sit those exams and being able to work with teachers and so on. And so it's really important not to lose sight of that. And for UNHCR, along with UNICEF and others, to be standing behind and supporting government responses. Where we do need to look at things is then advocating within those plans for refugees to be included in them. It doesn't always happen as a reflex reaction. And particularly when there's a moment of crisis, it's very difficult for governments to keep hold of all of the vulnerable populations that they're looking after. And very often we see that refugees are the people who are left out. So we're there advocating for them to be involved, sharing data, looking at geographic focus and making sure that host communities who are often also disadvantaged, where refugees are in very rural or remote areas, that everybody is benefiting from, from what is on offer. And finally, putting in place support to go the extra mile. So whilst there might be excellent programmes by host governments, there might be additional needs that refugee populations have. And we're there to help be that bridging link between what's happening at a national level and refugees' ability to access them. And I'll talk a bit about a bit about that specifically coming on. Next slide. So I think I wanted to set out with this idea of sequencing the response. I think there is a huge interest in, you know, making sure that we're continuing learning from the get go. And whilst I think that's really important, there's also a moment to kind of pause. And I put in here this very old quote from, which is about education and emergencies. And I think it's from 1999. But it's saying, you know, education isn't necessarily this super fast stopgap measure, but where we can put in some rapid activities, but also make sure that we're working towards the longer term response and those longer term goals. So from a UNHCR perspective, similar to what my colleagues have mentioned, we're looking, we looked first and foremost at protecting children. So looking at nutrition, understanding the number of children who receive, you know, their main meal of the day through school feeding programmes, which we undertake often in partnership with the World Food Programme, and looking at protection and where children are at increased risk. So that's kind of the very first thing off the blocks. Then it's looking at where there is immediate support for continuity of learning. And I'll talk a little bit about the things that we have been able to do, where we have been able to make investments and where we have been able to put things in place. One of the reasons I've chosen this photo, it's not a strict education photo, but this is in Kekuma Refugee Camp in Kenya. And this is a refugee who immediately started looking at how to make masks. Also to sell them, but how to make sure that people have access to masks, which they can get in the camp. And I wanted to put this photo in because whilst I'm talking here about sequencing the response, it's really important that we remember, you know, people have their own agency. Refugees are not sitting in camps waiting for UNHCR to come in and help them. People have their own ideas, they have their own jobs, they have things that they want to be doing and they are doing those immediately. And one of our roles is to come behind and give them the extra bit of support to get that out to more people. The third thing in the sequence is around really continuing support to teachers. I see there's a series of questions in the chat about teachers. And I think it's crucial that the teachers and educators and education administrators are really supportive to continue the work that they're doing. And then for us, we're looking already at preparing for return. And part of that is around getting ready to build back better. But it's also looking at, okay, if we're not going to reach every child, particularly where they might be more vulnerable or have worse access to things like, you know, online learning platforms. How do we make sure that we're preparing so that when children can go back to school, we can put in place the wraparound support they need? So I'm going to use that sequencing of the response to talk about the things that we're doing at UNHCR. Next slide. So building in support for teachers. I mean, I think teachers are at the, are at the heart of education for us. There is a huge role for parents and that role is being much more drawn on in these times. But teachers kind of, and the need to protect the education workforce is critical anyway, and also during this pandemic. And I think that's partly recognising there's an existing global teacher shortage. So we don't have enough teachers, people are not well looked after, they're not necessarily well paid or trained or supported. And we can't lose sight of that and lose the teachers that we have in place. UNHCR has been pushing for and has been continuing to pay teacher salaries and incentives. And I think it's worth noting here that where many teachers will fall under a national system and will be paid by the state, that is very often not the case for refugees. It is in some places. There are also many countries like DRC, for example, where the majority of teacher salary actually comes from parents. And we shouldn't underestimate the contribution of parents and others to teacher pay packages. So we're really advocating for and continuing to pay teachers. We're also looking at advocating for the inclusion of refugee teachers international plans. So there are lots of teachers that we work with who aren't currently recognised by national systems. And it's been a very long and ongoing piece of work to look at how our teachers are trained, whether their certificates are recognised across borders. And that's easier in some places than others. So within the East African community, for example, there are some clear goals towards, you know, use of curriculum and teacher training, but that's not true across all borders. And just making sure that where we can, we're also really relying on those refugee teachers and giving them the support that they need, making sure they don't kind of fall through the gaps where we're looking at national responses. And finally, both supporting teachers to play a full role in the community and really recognising that teachers are one of the groups of people who are really trusted. They have a huge role in terms of their engagement with, with children. But they're also one of the few people that families have confidence in, especially as very often they're based inside the community. I think we're also recognising here that when there's a return to education, teachers will be relied on even more. You know, during Ebola, teachers were expected to, you know, perform kind of temperature checks, looking at disinfecting classrooms. There's a huge expectation on teachers and we're just saying that they need to be valued at the same time. Next slide. So supporting remote learning, online and offline. And there's been a lot of conversation about particularly online and distance learning, which we think is excellent. UNHCR has a number of programmes which has looked at online and distance learning, but almost all of it is classroom based. So there are very few situations where we've been able to take the kind of resourcing that we put into, you know, a classroom or a computer lab and make it available for individuals. And there's lots of reasons for that. One of the, one of them is about equity and actually the, you know, the number of tablets or the number of computers. How do you decide who has it? How do you share it out? The other is all of the pieces around protocol and around, you know, keeping things clean, keeping everybody safe. So on the whole, whilst we have lots of experience in hardware, it hasn't been something that we have been able to roll out massively. It has happened in some places. In Uganda, we've been looking at the ability to roll out tablets, particularly to final grades. So looking right across the education spectrum, where are the children that we think will suffer the most from being out of school? Now, and some of that is for those children who have managed to stay in school and where they're not going to be able to sit exams or what they're really worried about falling back. We are trying to roll out national approaches as soon as possible. And that comes back to the first point about really leaning into what's happening nationally. So the tablet example in Uganda is where the Ugandan government also has a very effective learning platform that UNHCR, UNICEF and others have been involved with. And that's curated content, so it directly maps to the Ugandan curriculum. And it means that people can use it, teachers can access it, students can find the self-directed pieces. What UNHCR sometimes needs to do is put in place some localisation of content and some additional pointers, so that people who aren't as experienced can, can access it. But I think it's also important to note that for the majority of refugees that we work with, they don't have access to the hardware, they don't necessarily have access to connectivity. There are some countries where it is not legal for a refugee to own a SIM card because of restrictions on refugees. And so we've also been looking at low and no tech solutions. And this is on the one hand for students themselves and on the other hand, to have this continued engagement and support with teachers. And so this photo here is in, is in Dadaab, refugee camp in Kenya. So this is a student who has gone in, there is a community radio station in Dadaab anyway. And they have worked out a series of protocols for the teachers to be able to go in. They're reading out lessons, they're talking to the students, they're putting out messages. It's very, very simple. Kenya itself actually is putting out content on the radio. And what we're hoping to do is have that content played on the community radio stations. And then have teachers who are based there be able to talk through, you know, what was that content? How might you understand it here? Are there examples that were given that maybe don't make sense in our context? Are there tricky words that maybe you want to translate? And really just doing some wraparound support. And it's something which has been incredibly effective. And the final thing I have here is, is looking at our approaches to education support where we can, so it works for students right now. And an example of this is in Egypt, where we have students who've been going to extracurricular classes to make sure that they have the language and the foundation skills to be in Egyptian schools, which is permitted for a number of nationalities by the Egyptian government. Instead of giving them the finance to transport them to those classes, we've converted that so they have money for data bundles, which means that they can access support, they can access online content. So they're not going to be missing out at the end. Next slide. And the next one, thanks. So mitigating against inequality. I think this is really important and it's come up in a number of questions. I think one of the things it's, it's useful to note is that it's not like we have an equal system now. There are inequalities throughout the education system, you know, children do, children who are marginalised, who suffered from conflict, who have been displaced. Girls, children with disabilities, they are doing less well, they have fewer years of schooling and their learning outcomes are worse. And we collectively as the UN agencies and many other people are working on those issues, but we're starting from a perspective of inequality. What's really important is that the COVID pandemic and our response to it doesn't increase those inequalities. So the first thing for us is looking at do no harm. You know, what are we thinking about? How are we making sure, for example, that where we're talking about distributing tablets? We didn't feel we could do that in a way which would do no harm, because we felt it was impossible to treat people the same, to give people the same access and to make sure that children weren't going to be in positions of risk if we did that. The second is about this advocating for equity. So some of this is around working, you know, with national governments, for example, but some of it is saying, okay, we're working with radio, radio can be really effective. Are there households, are there some of those poorest households where they just don't have access to radios? Are there some who are, you know, the furthest end of the settlement, who are more kind of geographically displaced, where they don't have access to the FM signal? And how do we make sure that access and resources get to people? We should be able to understand who is affected differently and how to plan for this. And I think Caroline's point about documenting is really important, because one of the things that we are all leaning on is evidence that has come out of Ebola. What we know from Ebola is that girls were so much less likely to return to school. And some of those things were around, you know, how return happened. Girls were not able to access materials at home, for example, as much because they were expected to have caring responsibilities. And so making sure, given that we know girls are more affected, how do we make sure that we're building that into our planning? And I think that's particularly important as we're preparing for back to school. Next slide. So what comes next? Next slide. This is, I was going to have a picture of a crystal ball instead. But I thought we would have that picture of all the children kind of happily back in school. So this is just a few, a few, I think probably highly personal thoughts on a post-COVID world. And I've started this off with, you know, a future where refugee children can contribute to a better world. So it's important that remember that, that education is a right, but it's also something which prepares people for a future. And what we know, you know, from Ebola and from conflict situations is where children miss out on education, they miss out on contributing to that future. The photo that I have in here is, is a lady called Bahati. She was a Rwandese refugee and she was supported by UNHCR to have tertiary scholarship. So she did her higher education, she became a nurse. And she is now actually working at the frontline of the COVID response as a nurse. And that's, you know, partly thanks to UNHCR tertiary scholarship, massively thanks to Bahati's own inspiration and dedication, you know, and to her parents for getting her there. If we don't, if we don't commit to educating people now and to continuing to educate refugees, you know, the future Bahatis will not exist and we will collectively be the poorer for it. The second thing I think is guarding against the exacerbation of existing inequalities. And I think that is, you know, it's something which has been throughout all of these presentations and it's really important to keep in mind. All of us who've been working on education pre-COVID were struggling with this anyway. And I think we're all very concerned to see a backslide and a loss of some of these gains. The third point here is about advocating for increased domestic and global financing. And so this has come up, you know, a few times. One of the challenges for UNHCR and for others, I think, is where domestic finance decreases. Sometimes you also find policy challenges around things like inclusion of refugees or inclusion of the most marginalised or those things which are seen as kind of nice to have. And that's incredibly important to recognise that, that financing challenges really do impact on the poorest and the most vulnerable. The fourth point is on seizing the chance to build back better. And I think we've looked at, you know, the chance to put wash into schools, the majority of schools that we work with, particularly in the camps, have really, really inefficient wash. And that has, you know, created health issues a number of times, but now with COVID, there's a moment to fix that. There's something around the preparedness of education systems, the resilience of education systems to crisis and conflict. And also to pandemics. I think it's interesting to see what happens and, you know, how able are we to continue to have teacher payments? How able are we to talk to all of the students in a school, for example? And also looking at whether we have found new and flexible modalities which have worked during the pandemic, which could then maybe be rolled out or kept in place for children and for the most vulnerable, so that they can continue learning. I think what's interesting is in some places, what we've, what we've been doing is taking lessons from pastoralist and nomadic communities, for example. So in Sudan, where those children would normally have potentially chunks of time that they would miss from their education and try and see if some of those, if some of those approaches would work for children here who are now missing out. Another point is about learning on what does and doesn't work in connected education. And I think there has always been so much interest in, in online and distance learning, in the use of ed tech. There's been lots of pilots and lots of enthusiasm. The Minister for Education in Egypt said, I think, you know, we've learnt more in 10 days than we have in the last 10 years, because they've been, you know, forced to suddenly roll out some of the things that they've been piloting. But if we document, if we're honest, if we're, you know, able to take time to learn, there is actually a moment where we can really pick up some of the learnings about those things and particularly about equity and how it impacts the digital divide. I think this has been throughout my presentation, but valuing teachers, continuing to see them as part of our work. And, you know, I would also put in there, parents, really kind of looking at how parents can be better supported and bringing the whole kind of community of education back together. And a final one, because this is my ideal post-COVID world, is that we would recognise the, the need for mental health and psychosocial support. It's so crucial. And for refugee students, it's crucial for a huge amount of reasons anyway. And with what's happening with kind of protection challenges, with the trauma that children are facing being out of school and some of these kind of global issues which are affecting children, it's also a chance potentially to put in place some of those services that we know children desperately need. And that's it from me. So thank you very much.
Becky, fantastic. Thank you very much indeed. And thank you all for sticking to time. So we have about 15 minutes now, 15, 20 minutes for a discussion. So if all of the speakers would be kind enough to unmute their videos, if that's the right phrase, so we can see. And there've been hundreds and hundreds of questions coming through on the chat function on and on Twitter and for people watching the live stream on YouTube and on Facebook. So we've tried to synthesise them into groupings. And what I would really like for this, because it's an amazing opportunity for, for all of us who are part of this, to hear from so many of the heads of section or education leaders in different parts of the UN, is that it would be much better if it isn't a series of bilateral questions from me to Becky and then me to Caroline. So for you all to feel free to talk, talk across me and talk to each other as well. I know that Rob has had to leave, but I believe he's been replaced by Peter De Vries. Peter, are you on the call as well? Perhaps Peter will be joining us shortly. Yvette is still here, though. So I thought for the beginning, we'd follow, we could follow the sequence of the next couple of Global Education Monitoring Report focus areas. Because there've been a lot of questions about inequality and inclusion, a number of questions about the role of non-state actors. And then understandably, an awful lot of questions about technology. So we'll start with the questions around inclusion and inequality. And these are to all of you, so feel free to unmute and come in with answers whenever you'd want. So one of the lessons that we're hearing across the conference, that people are very keen to, to apply and not see replicated, are lessons learned from the recovery from the 2008 recession and how there's been this massive acceleration of inequality in the decade since 2008. And so applying lessons learned to try and ensure that doesn't happen again. So I would love to So I would love to get your thoughts on how we avoid increasing pre-existing inequalities or creating new ones with these new learning models. Becky, you talked about that in some of your final slides, so maybe we could turn to you first, if that was okay.
Thanks. I think it's, I think it's very hard to do. And I think one of the, one of the things which we have been saying is a little bit just to pause as we're making ready our responses and preparing to really work through them and think about how we can increase access to the most vulnerable. Now, some of those things are going to be around, you know, giving people things. So is it about hardware? Is it about teacher learning packages? Is it simple things like, you know, pens and pencils and are there ways that we can distribute them? Some of it, I think, is about actually planning for a return. Because our ability to, to do kind of mass enormous distributions of things like, you know, tablets to get, get people onto learning platforms or connectivity very rapidly is very limited. And it's also incredibly expensive. So whilst, I think the challenge in our response is understanding how long it's going to last is the other thing. Because if we knew that people were going to be out of school, you know, for, for a whole school year, that, that might be worth doing. But I think our focus is very much on doing what we can, making sure that what we can do is, you know, appropriately bridged, translated, supported, recognizing where there is lack of access to particular things or where certain people in a family, girls, for example, would be the last to have access to something. And then really as we're preparing for return, making sure that we take into account where people might have missed out and trying to put in place specialist things to, to improve that. And, you know, after Ebola, there were particular things like after-school clubs for girls and after-school clubs for girls of a particular age, so secondary girls dropped out in enormous numbers after Ebola. And making sure that we're recognizing those groups and giving them some, some special additional support when we're going back.
Thank you. Caroline, would you like to come in on the same question?
Thank you. Actually, funny enough, we found out that boys are not actually getting engaged as much as girls. You know, so that's kind of really interesting because we were expecting the same, that the girl will be the last one to get hold of any technology that there is. But actually, you know, our initial findings, which obviously we're going to look into in more detail, are that boys, well, basically because it seemed to be a question of interest and application as opposed to access. So I think that we realized, you know, that first of all, it's, it's not just access. It's very nuanced, as we've been saying, as Becky was saying too. You know, it is about electricity, it is about, you know, whether you've got the devices, it is about how many children in the family, what age they are, it is about connectivity, you know. And, you know, those are all things that, you know, we are now trying to drill down and really find out. But the big point that I think Frost made is that we've got to remember textbooks, which in many countries are, you know, really come on and they're kind of quite interactive. That in this kind of crisis, kids can have textbooks, you know, they're not going to be bombed and their house is destroyed as we've seen before. And the idea of the wraparound material, you know, and then perhaps the TV programs and the radio programs to supplement that and the teacher support. So you have your material that literally says, you know, today you're going to do fractions, etc. Why don't you sit there and cut a piece of paper into four, so something very practical. Then it says, turn to page 10, you know. So much more thinking about this approach and not thinking we have to rely on putting things online when the kids have got textbooks which they didn't have in ordinary crises.
What about, I mean, Yvette, from your perspective with a, with a country focus for UNICEF, what measures are you looking to put in place to try to avoid either bringing in new inequalities in response or, or replicating or increasing pre-existing ones?
Thank you so much. Indeed, this is one of our biggest concerns, as you can imagine. And I started from the premise that this is the region that has high grade of inequality already. And as I mentioned in the presentation, already in El Salvador, of every 100 children that entered primary school, only 35 were graduating from high school. So the situation is pretty dire. We have the situation of migrant children, which was so well reflected by our colleagues in UNHCR. And in that context, we're looking at this as an opportunity to bridge many, many divides. I focused my presentation on the technical divide because that's a huge bet for this government. And there is good connectivity throughout El Salvador. So when we see these inequalities, we see them as, as structural, but not impossible to bridge. And in that sense, the Ministry of Education is really betting on sort of this idea. Of course, we will have to continue with, with radio, with television, with print in those instances in which we have areas that don't even have potable water. But the way I think it's been handled in El Salvador is that we have to reimagine education and reimagine the launching of schools once again with a renewed understanding of the importance of, of the centrality of education and the centrality of schools as a community base. There's been so much good conversation in this forum about teachers and the importance of teachers, the, the role that parents now see that teachers have in the learning, the commitment of teachers and rewarding teachers. And I think part of that is happening through technology in a very organic way. I mean, teachers are being energized to, to these digital platforms. I don't think digital is the whole answer, but I think it can, in this moment, help us really bridge inequalities. Thank you.
So the, do you see, this is a question to all of you as well. Are you seeing the relationship with teachers changing or the status of teachers changing in the communities or countries where you work? And that is a question which is open to all of you. Maybe if you all took video, if you put your videos on, then you can see each other as we're talking. Thank you. So do you see, I mean, Frost, perhaps with the work that you're leading with UNRWA, are you seeing the status and relationship of teachers in communities changing during this crisis period? Is more being asked of teachers again?
Okay, I will try to answer this one, but I think teachers, as ever, are becoming more and more important. A lot is demanded from them and challenges and new things that they have to deal with in new contexts that they were probably not prepared for, such as developing self-earning material, being committed. And this is something that we have seen and we, we hear this a lot from our field offices. The commitment of teachers to their, to the, the children that they're teaching, we, we witness this a lot these days. It's not that, okay, there's a crisis, teachers are sitting at home. No, teachers are working, teachers are developing material, teachers are keeping contact with the students. So just to say, I think that there is more emphasis on what they're doing and I think there should be more support to what the teachers are, are doing. And I remember there was a, a note that was circulated from the Teachers Task Force that Caroline and I read some, two weeks ago. And it really emphasized the importance of how teachers should be supported and in terms of like salaries being paid, not being laid back, acknowledging all the challenges that they themselves are facing nowadays in addition to their normal challenges.
Great, thank you. I think one of the things that we've seen come up in a number of the other discussions in this conference is how people are beginning to get a sense that teachers are being much more appreciated and all the different roles that teachers play are becoming more visible in the lives of children and young people at the moment. So there's a question within this Build Back Better narrative, there's a question that we'll come to in a bit about how do we keep some of that thinking central to the education systems that emerge after COVID-19?
I think maybe Dominic, because with regard to, you know, realizing these frontline services now, we hope that, you know, my country, the UK, is actually realizing who's important, you know, which is kind of quite interesting because it's not those with the most money, et cetera. And teachers as public servants are stepping up and playing all sorts of other roles in societies. Certainly they are here in the, in the UNRWA fields of operation, you know, they are helping to, you know, be there for the quarantine centers, you know, in terms of that, in terms of distribution. So they're playing these other roles as kind of reliable, trustworthy public servants. So I think both, in both regards, in terms of education being so important, you know, in terms of carrying, giving children some level of normalcy, carrying on with their education, getting the messages, health messages across the, but also, as I said, as a kind of trusted body of, of public servants that can be called upon. So I think that this is really, you know, happening in our whole view of, you know, who's important, I mean, not ours hopefully, but the view of many of what's important, that yes, teachers are really, are seen now as actually crucial in both, in both regards.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on slightly now because there are a number of questions about the work that your different agencies are specifically involved in for students with disabilities and helping them and their families during this, during this period of crisis. So we would love to hear from the three of you. And then Manos, maybe if you're able to share some global reflections on this as well. So maybe we could go UNICEF, then UNHCR, then UNRWA, if that's okay?
Sure, thank you. As Rob mentioned, this is a particular area of interest for UNICEF and an area of focus. In the context of El Salvador, civil society advocates have already made a list of demands for the Ministry of Education to sort of cater what is, what has been the post-COVID response. So a lot of the digital material that's been available, it's also available in audio. And in that sense, the ministry, I think, has done an admirable job in, in very quickly. I think one of our colleagues said that, I think it was the Minister of Education of Egypt, if I'm not mistaken, said that they'd learned more in the last, you know, 10 days and in the last 10 years. I think that's kind of the experience that we're seeing in El Salvador. Very quickly, following that decision tree that Rob Jenkins presented, El Salvador followed that model. But disability was very much central to it. And in that context, there's already material for hearing impaired, visually impaired. The visually impaired material is taking longer. Printing presses are actually not working in the country right now, we're on total lockdown. But the thinking, the thinking of inclusion is really driving it. And I must say, I'm really cautiously optimistic that perhaps this global crisis can really reframe some of the educational morass that was there and, and really, you know, kind of galvanize more creative thinking. And, and the, the, the work around disability and bridging disabilities is central to that creativity. I think it's really driving change. Thank you.
That's a point which has come up in a number of other conversations as well about how the, the things which are most important or most valued in education systems are becoming much more visible during this crisis. And so Becky, can we go to you next to hear a bit more about UNHCR's work with families and children with disabilities?
Thank you. I mean, and I think it's, it's great that Manos is here because obviously we've also worked with the, the Gem Report around inclusion and looking at some of the issues of disability more widely. So I think for, for UNHCR, because we have this very direct relationship with families, we're able to work around supporting them when there is a crisis like this. And that happens very much at the, you know, the level of the camp or of the settlement so that there are things put in place to support people more effectively. I think it is one place as well where, I mean, we've talked a lot about places where technology is maybe not helpful or is not going to be the answer. But actually, I do think for children with disabilities, there's a space for technology to, to help us put in additional responses. So we talked a bit there about audio, but also about, you know, spoken, spoken books. There are apps that you can use. There's a teacher that works, I think, in Dadaab Refugee Camp in Kenya, who is blind and where we've supported him with technology so actually he can teach a whole class and be able to, to put in place. And he's the kind of person who also helps us think through what are the kind of things that we can use to get materials and get additional support out to students who are kind of the most marginalized.
Thank you. Let's, I'm gonna change tack slightly because I've just seen the time and we've only got seven minutes left. So let's move on to some of the questions about non-state actors. Maybe Manos, maybe we could start with you here, if that's okay. And are you seeing, in, you know, we're in what, the first 100, 120 days of this global pandemic, but are you seeing already a, a changing role for non-state actors in education? And do you think the crisis is going to accentuate that and accelerate it?
You're actually right how the, fortuitously, the, the three topics of the global monitoring report and of course, the last one, which was on displacement and migration, kind of somewhat affected by this crisis and how we can give a new sense and a new interpretation on how crises of that kind cut across these themes that otherwise we would have looked at in a very different way. I would probably start before reaching the aspect of the non-state actors by saying that the crisis offers, I think, a confirmation of the way we have been approaching the issue of inclusion in this year's report. Yes, we do tend to associate in many parts of the world, inclusion with disability. And that's because the, the, the social movement behind disability was so powerful in bringing attention of education policymakers to the learners, these learners' needs. And it's true that this crisis particularly, is particularly painful for, for those learners. Even some of the most wealthy education districts in the world, in Seattle, for example, realize that after a few days of trying, they could not really offer the quality of service they needed. And many states in, in the United States are actually not living up to the standards, the legal federal legislation standards of, of serving these children's needs. But we also see how practically anyone, without really expecting, can be in a situation of vulnerability. And therefore that education systems should be designed, not necessarily thinking of particular groups, but being inclusion focused, like ensuring that diversity is respected. And therefore that we go for the principle, which I'm glad others also used in their presentation of doing no harm. We have to find solutions, not those that are fancy and that maybe attract the interest of policymakers because they sound interesting and innovative, but we have to focus on those solutions that will serve everyone and serve everyone equally. So that's a key message of our report on inclusion, on our education solutions. And I think it applies even more in the case of, of the pandemic. Briefly speaking on, on non-state actors, we will see and we will examine very much the services that non-state actors will be providing during this crisis. We have seen a lot of interesting activities, a lot of interesting engagement and also good examples of public, private partnerships that are noteworthy. But ultimately, where we will all be tested and especially the non-state actors and especially the, the corporate actors, is the willingness to adhere to principles for how all this information and data on individual children are going to be used, treated with respect and respect of everyone's rights. I think this is a key element to which we should be drawing our attention.
Thank you. It's been a really interesting, the issue of data protection or data rights has been, hasn't featured in previous discussions in our conference over the last couple of days. So thank you to all of you who forefronted that. There were a lot of questions about technology and particularly in low or no-tech environments and which solutions you are seeing as being particularly effective. So I wondered if there was a standout example of low or no-tech interventions that you've seen in the first phase of the crisis that you could share a little bit, a little bit more about? And whoever would like to speak to that? So if there was a particularly compelling or effective or impactful example of low-tech or no-tech interventions? Or maybe that's why so many people have posed the question, because there isn't one and we don't know the answer?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's something that we're, you know, we're asked for, we're asked for a lot. And I think it is something that takes kind of extra, extra support. We've talked a little bit about radio and I think Caroline made some good points about, you know, radio works really well if you have a parent with you who can listen and kind of do, do exercises. It also works really well if you have a textbook or if you have a kind of paper package so that you can go and you can do additional things. I think we, we lean on all of those things and, you know, children who've got materials at home or books at home are kind of potentially luckier than, than others. I do think there are points where, you know, we shouldn't kind of throw the, the tech out with the bathwater, to mix a metaphor. And there are, there are points like teacher learning circles on WhatsApp where they are relatively low-tech. Lots and lots of people have WhatsApp, they use it to communicate, you know. There are places where we can be sending audio notes, we can send PDFs or cartoons, we can send examples. Where we are in camp situations, teachers can potentially even go and use a loudspeaker in the blocks, you know, and be taking what they have managed to receive through their phone and go and translate that and share it out with people. So I think that those are the things where actually people have taken a whole series of, of bits of solution and put them together as something that works very directly in their, in their context is where we see things working.
Is there a central place? Sorry Caroline, go on.
Just to add to that, it's about a range. I think it is about a range of approaches and it's like, therefore there won't be a low therefore, there won't be a low-tech solution, just like there isn't a high-tech solution. But it's actually looking at how, you're looking at what you're trying to do. If a child has a book in front of them, okay, you're trying to play the role that the teacher would give. You've got the parent, and you think how to achieve that. And yes, just to say, with regard to WhatsApp, and teachers have WhatsApp groups, they even send resources through to children, you know, via their parents that have phones. So I think that's what I would like to say, that there will never be one solution, not that you're suggesting that, but it will be how we can use them. And look at the gap is, if you've got the textbook, what is the gap? Whereas before, say, in the Syria War, we didn't have anything. So we had to think, okay, we haven't even got the basic learning material here, we had to fill all the gaps. Thank you.
In the context of El Salvador, we had one interesting high-tech, low-tech modality, which was brought to us by Musicians Without Borders. So prior to COVID, Musicians Without Borders was using music with no instruments. It was basically, it's basically children using their bodies and their voices to express themselves. And once the COVID hit, basically, all of those teachers that had been trained in this modality, which is supposed to promote peaceful coexistence, particularly among, you know, communities that are affected by gang violence, have continued the practice of connecting via WhatsApp or via voice notes, and have promoted this kind of touching your body and making noise and sort of connecting. So it's very low-tech, and it's continued dramatically outside of the classroom. So that's one very tangible example.
Thank you for that. I hope we've got time for two more questions. We may overrun by a minute or two, if that's okay. So the first question I'd like to ask, has there been some amazing discussion in all of your presentations about the Build Back Better idea, or as UNICEF framed it, reopening better schools? And so, you know, in the midst of the crisis where we are now, I would love to hear from each of you, one thing which is giving you hope for the future, or one thing that you're really hoping we will be able to forefront in schools and curricula and education systems when they reopen?
I think one thing that's giving UNICEF hope, and I think it's given me a lot of hope here in El Salvador, is regional approaches. The idea of collaborating, very early in the crisis, the Minister of Education of Argentina hosted a Zoom meeting like this with about 15 different Ministers of Education across the region. And there's been tremendous exchange of experiences. So I do think, somebody, a colleague, I think, who's spoken has mentioned about West Africa, and the fact that they're looking at teacher certifications across. And all of those regional approaches, I think, in the pandemic become even more necessary, given that obviously, the pandemic will travel. And the equity of sharing information and sharing experience and sort of building upon competitive advantages of different experiences, I think, has really given me a lot of hope. Thank you.
That's really encouraging, because we had, I think, an opposite or a different view to that this morning, where there was real concern about how the pandemic was accentuating unilateralism. So hearing about a regional case where international cooperation is increasing is brilliant. To Caroline or Frost, from your calls for hope?
Sorry, Frost, is that okay, Frost? Yeah, sorry. I was just thinking, it's about what we're doing is we're asking everyone to think about all the things everyone always should be thinking about. So you're thinking about the nature of the learning materials, you're thinking about, you know, how to kind of enrich them, you're thinking about how to support the children, you know, what do they need from the teacher, from the parent, you're thinking about, you know, how to assess, and we're thinking about accessibility of the material. So all the different things we're thinking about now is what we should always be thinking about. So I hope that will go back in, that, you know, the teachers back in the classroom will be thinking, as they're there with their lesson, thinking about everything, what is this material doing? How do I engage the home? How do I make sure this and this? So they are kind of, you know, really reminding each other to think holistically about what we're trying to do and how we can therefore do it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Caroline. And Becky?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with all of those points. And I think from the perspective of sitting in Europe, I think the thing that gives me hope from this is how much more people understand how difficult it is to teach children. So everyone who's got their kids at home, and who has been having to teach children themselves, has actually a newfound appreciation of what it means to have teachers. There's something about the kind of pandemic and the lockdown that feels like we've stripped back some of the things which are going on. And actually, you know, back to basics, as Caroline said, what does it mean to have a classroom that supports children with a teacher who is supported, you know, well looked after, with a parent who understands what's going on? We have huge issues in terms of, you know, access to quality education for refugees, and that will continue to be a struggle. But I think there's just been a moment where people look at the nuts and bolts of education and see how much they really matter.
Great, thank you very much. It's incredibly encouraging to hear examples and causes for hope from each of your different perspectives in the midst of the crisis. So thank you very much to all of you for sharing your expertise and giving your time to us this afternoon. I think some of the key takeaways for me from this has been the ways in which the crisis has exposed massive inequalities in the world's education systems, and how we need to be so careful at the moment to apply that do-no-harm principle, and not bring in new qualities or accentuate pre-existing ones. The extent of the disruption to social support that the pandemic has caused, and the changing idea about the role of schools and the ways in which communities and societies will hopefully value teachers and see their role much more positively post-COVID-19. And finally, although we didn't get to it in the question, so many of you talked about the sort of the need for more psychosocial support or social and emotional learning programs in schools, and thinking about how do we educate the whole child, and the more holistic approach to education. So it's been absolutely wonderful. Thank you so much again for all of your presentations and expertise. And with that, we'll bring this part of the conference to a close. For anyone who is planning to rejoin, we will start again in about an hour's time. And we have a keynote from Andrea Schleicher to open the next part of the conference. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dominic, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Wash those hands. Okay, bye.
Bye.